Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's board meeting. We're glad to have you with us. This evening marks a continued step forward in our new meeting format, one that places a greater emphasis on transparency, collaboration, and shared understanding. As a part of this approach, we will be hearing directly from our school administration through presentations designed to keep our community better informed and more engaged in the work happening every day in Richland, too. We believe that open communication is the foundation of trust and that when we work together, we can truly make a difference in the lives of our students. In the spirit of that collaboration and forward movement, I'd like to share a quote from the remarkable educator and civil rights leader Mary McLeod Bethune, who said, "Invest in the human soul; who knows, it might be a diamond in the rough." Let us remind, let that remind all of us of the potential we nurture in every child and the responsibility we share in helping each one shine. Thank you for being here and for being a part of this important work. Now, you will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the agenda for the August 26, 2025 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The vote is, sorry, the motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Ms. Porter to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, if that's correct on the screen, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. And the reason it's seven yes is because Mr. Trapp is actually joining us over the phone. So he is not feeling well, and we wish him get well soon. All right, item 4.1, we will now move to item 4.1 Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Elkin Scott.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of receipt of legal advice regarding policy JII, Student Concerns, Complaints and Grievances, Administrative Rule KI, Visitors and Administrative Rule KE, Public Concerns and Complaints, Discussing a Contractual Matter Regarding the Purchase of Property, Requests for Contracts Ratification, Student Admission Requests into the District's Adult Education Program, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases, and Receipt of Legal Advice Concerning Superintendent's Evaluation.
The motion has been made by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Dr. Elkin Scott and seconded by, oh, oh, that's right. Let's see if it's correct on the screen, because that wasn't now full. Great job. That is correct. The motion has been made by Dr. Elkin Scott and seconded by Mr. Gary Dennis. Is there any discussion? If not, members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. The board will now enter into Executive Session. May I have a motion to end Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move that we end Executive Session at 6:29 and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter to end Executive Session at 6:29 and resume public session. Is there any discussion? All right, once it appears on the screen, if you can just confirm that that is correct, Ms. Washington, all right, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 5.1, the Consent Agenda. We will now move to item 5.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the Consent Agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda for the August 26, 2025 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Once it appears on the screen, if there's no discussion, is there any discussion, board members? All right, all right, Ms. Washington, is your motion correct? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 6.1, we have signed up, we have, sorry, let's see here, one, two, three, four, we have five people sign up to address the board. You will be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of you will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear an audible tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I'll remind you that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about an individual, school personnel, or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. So first up, we have Justice Hill, Hills, Justice Hills. Justice Hills. Okay. Next up is Ashley Solio, Solula? Oh, okay, sorry, there's a couple of extra letters in here. Okay, Sala.
Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Mr. Dennis for visiting the Portables at Pontiac Elementary on Wednesday, August 13th, and for getting the ball rolling with internet and phone access in our classrooms after Dr. Parrish spoke at the last board meeting. I'd also like to thank Dr. Elkins for stopping by yesterday during math instruction, and thank my administrative team for their continued advocacy on behalf of both teachers and students. Since returning to work on July 30th and after reflecting on the district convocation, I've been thinking deeply about Richland Two's core values, continuous improvement, learning, joy, and belonging, and how they connect to the realities at Pontiac. Continuous improvement. Pontiac hosted Portables during our recent construction, and a request for them to remain was made. We were told they would be used elsewhere, yet watched them get demolished during our recess times. Now we have students in unsafe and outdated spaces. In just the first 15 days of school, we've had a screw fall and hit a student, metal pieces coming loose by doorways, and even holes to the outside. These are not the conditions that reflect continuous improvement. Instead, they raise questions about whether we're being wasteful with resources and contradictory to the values we promote. Learning. We talk often about expanding opportunities for students, but at the start of this year, those opportunities were limited. Our curriculum is technology-based, yet clear-touch boards sat in boxes while students were already in class without internet. At one point, more than 40 students were learning in the cafeteria. Teachers were forced to use laptop screens for curriculum and their personal devices for internet access to deliver instruction. This is not the environment our students deserve. Joy. We also value joy, but joy is hard to foster when conditions overshadow accomplishments. I was excited to welcome a member of the communications team into my classroom, and my students and I were eager to see Pontiac celebrated, yet I never saw that story shared. If it was overlooked because of our learning conditions, then we must ask, are we truly being authentic in what we share about our schools? Belonging. Finally, belonging. This year's students are incredibly resilient. They began kindergarten virtually and are now navigating yet another challenge. They've asked me, why did they spend money to build a hallway but not more classrooms? And why weren't our classrooms ready for us? These are hard questions for me to answer. If continuous improvement, learning, and joy are compromised, how can my students, my colleagues, and I feel as though we belong and are valued? I raise these points not to criticize and least, but to call for action, because our students deserve a safe space, proper resources, and an authentic reflection of our shared values. It comes across that it takes advocates who are invested in Pontiac Elementary for change to occur, and that could be because it impacts students and staff there daily. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Ms. Felicia Jones.
Hello, everyone. I hope you had a great summer, and I'm here today. I told you before, I was a peace ambassador and humanitarian, speaking for the children and people who have no voice. Anyway, we just sued Scout Motor in South Carolina for $1.29 billion due to environmental pollution, and they don't even have their plant up yet. We still have 22 active environmental pollution cases, which again lines us up for the class action lawsuit due to the fact that South Carolina's youth and citizens is being polluted, poisoned by the environment every day. Again, I asked you for the $5,000, which now I'm turning to $10,000. We need that money to change our lifestyles. We also need to almost shut our environment down like COVID, so we can see the air, water, and even our minds clear up from the toxics that we're eating, drinking, and breathing every day. Okay, also, I asked you guys about a drone program to detect guns and human trafficking. Texas is doing it. Can you please consult with their lawmakers? Texas is doing it. It is called AI. Okay. Texas Startup Program, New Defense Against School Shooters Using Drones. And I asked you to do that in January. I noticed that they did that in July. I met with a senator, and I spoke at city council about these same topics that I'm speaking to you about, because it's not just the kids, but that's what's wrong with them, as well as us being negligent. And I told you Article 16 says the state is supposed to protect anyone that's disabled. Being on ADHD medication, 92% of our population, that means, that's called disabled, the school district and the state, the United States, because it's not just Richland County, it's the whole United States is on some form of ADHD medication, and there's a 300% spike in dementia. So get your thinking caps on. The prerequisite to dementia is ADHD. What are you going to do 20 years from now, when your whole population has dementia? Have you seen a dementia patient? Go visit one. Next is the guns, the test. If you know if you take this medicine, you can't drive. If you take this medicine, you shouldn't be able to buy a certain gun. You shouldn't be able to buy any gun, and we know gun violence is prevalent here, as well as across the nation. No other country has the amount of shootings that we have. Out of 500, 125 are done by people on mental medication. So that's your parents, your grandparents, the next generation. That's what's going on today. So that's what I'm still asking for. I'm still going to be back, and I would like to get a response. I've not got one response. This is my fourth time here. Thank you, have a day, and I did bring help.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Griffin.
Hello, everyone. I'm very happy to be here. What I'd like to do, if possible, I'd like to concede my minutes back to Felicia Jones. Is that possible?
Well, we have other people on here as well, so.
No, but I'm conceding my minutes.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So I was explaining to you before how one out of 10,000 children are born with plastic on the brain. Every person in the world has enough plastic on their brain to make a spoon. I'm not sure if any of you guys are doing, any paying attention to this. I know we are so distracted that we can't see our own children dodging bullets in kindergarten. When I went to school, we dodged attentions and tests. These kids are dodging bullets and death, and that makes every adult accountable, okay? It's not okay to turn your head to kids having to live that way. And there are some positive things. There's a young man in Atlanta that has found a way to convert microplastic and pollutants into drinkable water. That's in Pennsylvania. The one in Atlanta has found a way to convert it back into its natural resource, which is gas. That's where, that's what it is. Plastic is nothing but gas, and it's in our food, which is banned in, I'm sorry, banned in 45 countries. So please do not feed it to our students. I sent some information to the school board for you to try to update your lunch menus, take the negative things out of our kids' diet, so they are not facing heart disease like you, diabetes, cancer, brain cancer. These things are all due to where we're eating and breathing, as well as the AI. China lets their kids only two hours a day. Our kids won't go to bed without it. Why? It's because it causes mental retardation, alters your DNA, causes other things over extended period of time, okay? So all of that stuff is something that the school board really needs to take into account. And I have to say this, if I was a parent, if this was the 60s, you would be boycotted. They would boycott you, and that's how we got off of the back of that bus. And that's what every student, teacher, parent, especially if they have you doing a mass drill shooting as an administrator, teacher, or child, boycott the school system. We would get that class action lawsuit and that gun law yesterday. And I'm done, but I will be back. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Patricia Green.
Hello. Give in honor to God and all the mercy and grace I can receive from the school board, and thank God for each and every person that is here. I pray that you have heard about PFAS. They're now announced in our commercials. We don't want to destroy our brilliant minds that we're in charge of here in the school system. And in doing so, we have PFAS in our water. There are means of clearing it to an extent that it would be safe. You can go through DEHEC. They have a filter, and they can help you to get it out of the items, out of the water that it is in. Persons with private wells at home can call DEHEC and have them to come out and test your water to see how much PFAS is in it. PFAS affects the body. It's P-F-A-S. You can Google it, you can look it up. Our governor, the assistant governor, lieutenant general, has already sued the environmental control system and the USDA because of the poisons in the water and the poisons in the food. Nationwide, our nation has, has been covered with what they call a sludge fertilizer, which is no more than the waste from cleaning, cleaning wastewater and the waste from toxic chemical companies. It was put together back in the late 50s, and it was certified as good to be used for fertilizer. Farms, farms were using it on their farms to grow food with, and in doing that, it all got into the food. And over the continuation of using this over all these years up until this date, our past presidential government had just put in an order for all of the states to check the waters and have the waters cleaned. But our incoming president wiped it all out. He stopped everything. So it's up to us to come forward and do something for our brilliant minds that are coming up behind us and all the generations. PFAS affects the body. It affects anything that is wrong with you. It quadruples it that many more times. You wonder why people have cancer so bad these days. You wonder why there's so many diseases coming up these days. Well, this is why. It's because of the contaminants in our food and in our water. So we can do something about it. If the school board would contact DEHEC or contact the governor, they received funds from their soup that they brought against environmental health. Contact them for some funds to put some filters on the water that is coming into these schools, in your kitchens, the drinking water that the kids are used to drink, the shower water that they're used to shower with when they play their activities, when they go forth and play at different schools. These are things that we need to pay attention to, not only for ourselves. We've already been affected by it. We're already well indulged with it, okay? And the only thing we can do is to try to cleanse our own bodies and our own bloods, but there's no way to do that. You can go to the central health department and get yourself tested for PFAS to know if you're over the level or if you're under the level as to having to be watched to see if it gets worse. But you can get DEHEC to check your water. The announcements on the television are telling you that you could buy certain kinds of filters to filter your water.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for listening. God bless.
Thank you. The board will now vote on items discussed in Executive Session.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we go there, can I have a point of order?
Sure.
I know we normally don't make comments with public participation, but as I was sitting here, I was thinking about something, and just a comment from Pontiac kind of disturbed me a little bit, because we care about all of our schools and all of our students, and I understand that there may be issues at some schools, because none of the buildings are perfect, but I just think in a public forum like this to make comments is if we don't care, and especially, everybody know I love Pontiac, because I was a teacher there, first grade teacher, and absolutely love Pontiac, love all my schools, but I do show favoritism a little bit to those where I actually taught, and Pontiac is one of them. So I was a little disturbed by that. And as much as we do for Pontiac, especially when they come before the board, I'm personally going to say this, because I'm bold enough to say it. Pontiac now is behaving like the book called If You Give a Mouse a Cookie, and I'll stop right there. If you're not familiar with that book, read it. And that's coming from me, not any other board member, because I'm bold enough to say it. If you give a mouse a cookie, that's Pontiac right now. Thank you.
Okay, item 7.0, voting on Executive Session Items. The board will now vote on items discussed in Executive Session. Item 7.1, may I please have a motion on the contractual matter regarding the purchase of property?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move that we authorize a superintendent to proceed with the property transactions discussed in Executive Session to purchase the property and improvements at 501 Spears Creek Church Road, Elgin, South Carolina, as shown as Richland County TMS R25700-05-01 from 501 SCCR LLC, with all documents being made available to the public once the transactions have been completed.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, once the motion appears on the screen, Ms. Washington, can you ensure that that's correct? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 7.2, may I please have a motion regarding a request for contract ratification?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dennis.
I move to ratify the contract with Pullenham Restorations for Services Provided at Westwood High School in response to an emergency matter that occurred involving the gym floor.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis and seconded by Ms. Washington. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, once that motion appears on the screen, Mr. Dennis, will you just confirm that that is correct?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 7.3, Student Admission Request into the District's Adult Education Program. May I please have a motion regarding the student admission request into the District's Adult Education Program?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the student admission request into the District's Adult Education Program for students 1 through 5.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Ms. Porter. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, once the motion appears on the screen, Ms. Washington, can you confirm that's correct? All right, as the motion is correct, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 7.4, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Williams and seconded by Mrs. Dr., sorry, Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, board members, well, once that goes on the screen, is that motion correct, Ms. Williams? All right, board members, please vote. Okay, the motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on now to unfinished business action requested, may I have a motion for item 8.1, Minority Utilization Plan?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the Minority Utilization Plan as presented.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair. There is no discussion, but I thought I requested the last time at the last meeting that this minority utilization plan actually be presented at the meeting, so the public can be aware of what's going on. Now, we're voting on it, which I'm going to support it, because I like what I see now, but I think. But I think my request was that we have this presented at the board.
It's presenting today.
So someone's gonna come and present this?
Yes. That's part of today's plan, right? That we have on there, the plan is in here?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, it's not being presented. It's just, the plan is here only for us to see. But I think my last request was, and that we voted to approve, that it would be presented.
Okay, so you wanted it to be a whole presentation to the public?
Right, and that's what we voted on. That's what we discussed, that it would come and be presented to the public so they can see the changes that we made and what we're doing. That was the original discussion, not just to get, put it in board docs only for us to see and vote on. And like I said, I like what I see now.
It is public. This was part of the public board docs.
Well, we know how that works. Being part of the public, board docs have nothing to do with it because there are people who don't watch.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Porter.
Now, being that we have a motion on the floor and a second, I think we need to move forward with voting. And if this is a recommendation or a request that we have for it to be presented, may we add that to another agenda at a later time to follow procedures?
That works for me. Y'all okay with that?
I mean, I'm okay with it, but that was not what we requested. So now we're voting on something that we did not request.
But we're voting on the plan because everybody's had a chance to opportunity. The board's had an opportunity to look at the plan because that's what we have to vote on. The public doesn't get to vote on the plan, we have to vote on the plan. So if everybody's looked at the plan because it was in board docs, then we should vote on the plan because we have to turn it in.
I'm going to vote on the plan, but as I stated before, we're gonna have to get back to business. And the business was, the request was to be presented at the board meeting, not just to put it in board docs, but to respect everyone's time. I'm going to give my yes vote, but I'll have this conversation later. Thank you.
And as Ms. Porter said, that if you want to have it on the agenda, we can put it back on the agenda and have it in the public for the public to, you know, have the presentation. If you want to do it that way, but we'll do it at the end. All right, so is that motion correct on the screen? All right, board members, please vote. All right, the motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 9.0, new business action requested. May I have a motion regarding to request to revisit the 2026-2027 school year calendar?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Porter.
I move to grant district administration the authority to revisit the 2026-2027 school year calendar in light of the newly adopted Educator Assistance Act, which in part requires teachers to have two self-directed workdays prior to students' first day of school.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Ms. Porter and seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Yeah, so we're looking at this school doc and along with the Assistance Education Act. I know we got five days already before the students come in. And I was looking over that and I started asking some teachers around. And are we looking to add more days to the five days? Or structure those five days so the first two days prior to the students coming back are to the teachers only?
Dr. Moore.
I'm gonna ask Dr. Franklin because she works with the calendar committee on that, but I believe we're adding one day or shifting a day to comply with the new requirements.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. And so our ask is for the board to authorize district administration to reconvene the calendar committee so that we could take another look at the calendar that was approved by the board in the spring of last school year to see if there are any revisions we can make to the calendar in order to better accommodate the requirement for teachers to have two full workdays at the beginning of the school year. We all know that the calendar isn't developed by district administration. It is the people's calendar. It's our calendar committee consists of teachers, classified employees, as well as parents. And so what we would love to have happen is to be able to reconvene the committee that developed the calendar and to inform them of the new requirement so that they can propose a recommendation to the board. This current school year with having five days prior to students returning, it was a challenge to ensure that teachers receive two full days of work time in their classrooms because we have all the things like district and service day, they have a school and service day. There's a day where we use a portion of the day for convocation. Schools also have their open houses or meet the teacher nights. We also have step up to six and fresh start the day before students return. And so it was a challenge. We made it work by not giving them full days in most instances. It was piecemeal. But our educators on the board know that, you know, once you use an hour and a half of that workday, it feels like your whole day is gone. And so we really want to honor our teachers' time as well as honor the letter of the law by having the calendar committee bring back to the board a recommendation on how we can make a minor adjustment to this calendar in order to meet that requirement to give teachers two full workdays prior to students returning.
All right, if there's no more discussion, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 10.0, new business, no action requested. We are going to look at 10.1, the internal auditor's report. This agenda item is a section in the, is a report from the internal auditor. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is aware, but the public may not be, we have an internal auditor in our district, and that is Ms. Melissa Myers. She is the executive director of internal auditing. And as required, we present an annual report to the board on the work of the internal auditor. And the reason for that is, one, part of the board's duties and responsibilities is the budget and fiscal accountability. Also, if you note on the organizational chart, while Ms. Myers reports directly to me, excuse me, there is a dotted line to the board because she also provides service to the board through her actions as internal auditor. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Myers.
Good evening, everyone. So I want to first start by just briefly talking about what internal audit is. An internal audit is an independent and objective review of both financial and operational procedures that's used in an entity to provide value to an organization. I know when you hear the word audit, at first there's like a negative stigma when you hear the word audit. But I like to always state that as internal audit, we're looking at a consulting process. We're trying to make sure that the auditees know that we're working as a team. It's possible that recommendations would be provided for process improvements. Findings may be noted, but we are evaluating the organizational risk to make sure that we strengthen our organization. So following any audit, a written report is submitted to the entity of the program office that was audited, and the district superintendent and the school board both receive copies of the written audit reports upon completion of the audit. So one of the most recent internal audits that was completed was an audit on time and effort. And time and effort is like the support for salaries and wages that's paid with federal funds. There are specific regulations that both the feds and the state place for any employee that's being paid solely or in part on any federal program. There are specific documentation that must be maintained. So the purpose of the time and effort audit was determined if the district was in compliance with both these federal and state regulations. So there were some findings noted as a result of this audit. And the first finding was that the semi-annual certifications that the district was using needs to be updated. And the semi-annual certification is used for employees who work solely on one federal program. 100% of their time is spent on the same federal program. And the semi-annual certification that the district was using was like a template from the State Department of Education that looked like it was actually a State Department of Education document instead of a Richland 2 document. And so a recommendation was made to update that semi-annual certification. They actually reflect that as a document of Richland 2, where not the State Department of Education. Also, required employee signatures were not noted on some of the items that we sampled on time sheets. So employees are required to sign time sheets, and we did note some instances where the employee signatures were not present. Also, payroll requisitions and time sheets were provided to support the time and effort requirement, and it was noted in some instances that the payroll requisitions and time sheets were not approved by the supervisor, which is also a requirement. Also, and this was an isolated instance in one school where the payroll requisitions and time sheets could not be located for the employees that we sampled and requested the time and effort documents for. Other findings included non-adherence to the SDE guidelines regarding required elements. Each year, the State Department of Education issues what they call the guidelines for maintaining federal requirements. And there are very specific requirements in that guidelines memo that state what should be included for time and effort. And in those instances noted, the ending work time was not present on a time law. The job title was not present, which were, again, State Department of Education requirements. Also, we noted untimely submission and approval of time sheets. And, but this issue was hard to reconcile the time sheets back to the pay because of the late submission of the time sheets. And also, there was one instance of miscalculation of the employee hours worked on the time sheet versus the payroll requisition. So the recommendations that was made during the audit included, as I stated earlier, updating the semi-annual certification forms so it should be a Richland 2 document. Recommendations also included expanding current written procedures to include specific internal controls in place for electronic time keepings. Of course, if it's electronic, it won't be signed. But the recommendation was made to make sure that we draft some written procedures so that that would show the controls in place, like a unique login for employees that's maintaining their timekeeping system electronically. Also, a recommendation was made to communicate with the supervisors on the importance of approving their time documents. Also, a recommendation was made to distribute the state requirements on record retention to employees responsible for maintaining the documentation so that upon request, those time and effort documentations can be located. In addition, a recommendation was made to distribute reminders of the deadline for the submission and the approval of time sheets to employees and the supervisors who are required for approving those time sheets. And also to perform a reconciliation between the time sheets and the payroll requisitions to ensure the calculation of the employee hours is accurate. So once the audit was completed and I met with Business Services, they agreed with all the findings and the recommendations, and they are implementing the corrective actions in regards to recommendations noted. Also began an internal audit on procurement, but that audit was suspended because once I started working on the audit, I found out that the external archers were completing the same audit for the same period. So I just suspended that audit for fiscal '24, '25. However, for '25, '26, I plan on going back to do procurement. Sorry, LaWanna. And hopefully I will get it done before the external archers come this time. So also, I'm currently working on an audit for fundraising because we do have some new guidelines that have been implemented. The superintendent has requested me to look at some specific schools for the fundraising also. And then I actually had a principal who wants me to come to their school to review some of their school accounts. So I plan on doing that audit also this year.
Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Board members, are there any questions?
Ms. Porter.
Yes, thank you for your report. Question that I have is for the items with the time sheets and the hours, those are things that take place at the individual schools. Is that under the bookkeeper in the school?
Those, now I'm looking at Nancy, but those are forwarded to the district office level for actual payment.
So all the issues that we have, it's not at the school level? It's at the district office level of the time sheets?
Maybe not all of them.
Okay.
But some of them, like the maintaining the time sheets, that's something that was at the school level. That was the issue there. But the miscalculation on the payment was at the district level.
And then also, I thought that we started using a new software at the schools for those that have to clock in and clock out. Is that not something that's also used for this purpose?
We just started that this school year. The audit was for last school year.
But with that software, that should rectify...
That will assist with the process.
And then they would have the ability to print it out to get those signatures from that software?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dennis.
I want to say thank you very much. I used to do your job in the Air Force, and it is not fun, especially when you're working with NATO and the Japanese Defense Forces and the United Kingdom Ministry of Defense. But do you go back and re-inspect things to ensure that they do it?
Yes, follow-up audits are conducted after. We give it sometime, we have a set timeframe yet, but yes, we do follow-up audits.
Perfect, thank you.
Dr. Elkin Scott?
I do have a question. I know, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I do appreciate that. The audit that you presented to us today is from last year. But I think my question is, and Dr. Moore, you can correct me. I've had some staff contact me, and there's a question about if you come into work at like 7:45, you can't get paid until it's like 8 o'clock. Or if you clock out at 3:10, you can't get paid unless it goes back to like 3 o'clock. Have you heard any complaints about the time within the 15-minute window for employees that's clocking in and clocking out?
I have not received any complaints about that. Dr. Scott.
Okay, then I will talk with you.
The hours are set. They have a set amount of time that they report, time that we, businesses concluded. And yes, you can clock in slightly early, but I have not received any complaints about 15 minutes.
If you guys can look into that, because I've gotten a few, not enough to really make a push about it, but one complaint to me is enough of an emergency to say let's make sure that we don't have people experiencing this, but just not sharing it with us. So that is a concern, that if they get off like at 3 o'clock and they actually have to work an extra 10 minutes, they are losing time because the clock is only gonna pay them to 3 o'clock, although they work to like 3:10 or 3:15. But we'll talk about that because I don't want to hold up the time. But thank you for sharing that.
Okay, thank you so much for that report. I only had one question. And so when you showed the recommendations, you guys, I heard you say that you guys are already working on those recommendations. So we're already in the process of remedying all of those, one through six?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, was there one more question? Okay, Ms. Porter.
It was. I just wanted to clarify from what I'm thinking because we've had a report on this before or heard something about it in regards to those restricted to working their work hours. Like some of this is so that, to make sure that people are not working, trying to accumulate overtime. Like if your scheduled workday is from this hour to that hour, you can't just decide, oh, this week I'm gonna come in 30 minutes early every day so I can get extra padding. There's some restrictions in place to ensure that, and it's your responsibility to, one, come to work at your scheduled time and also finish and leave by the time in which we've asked you to do that. So I'm thinking that that's what, that may be about. So I'm thinking that that's what, that may be about, I just wanted Dr. Moore to confirm for me.
Ms. Porter, in accordance with the Fair Labor Act, which is federal policy, for our non-exempt personnel, if they work beyond their contractual hours, they are entitled then to overtime. And so I will have to look into this issue, but overtime has to be pre-approved by your supervisor, you don't get to just choose. Now, for exempt people like myself, we can work as many hours as we need to work to get the job done, but we must comply with the law. And we did start our time clock this year, we did the pilot last year at the district as I shared with the board, and now we've rolled it out to school. So anytime you start anything new, there's always going to be some startup challenges that come along and we'll be more than happy to look into those, but you are absolutely correct that the Fair Labor Act requires that if anyone works beyond their hours, then that's considered overtime, but overtime does have to be pre-approved by their supervisor.
Ms. Nash, may I comment on that?
Yes, Dr. Elkin Scott.
I think we all understand that, that's not what I'm saying, because we all know that you may get off at a certain time, but if you have a student or you're dealing with a parent, you're not going to say, oh, Ms. Jones, it is 3 o'clock, I get off, see you later. So sometimes there are going to be circumstances, well, you may stay five minutes over, or you may stay 10 minutes over, but we'll talk about that. But I'm not referencing what I'm seeing to overtime with a fair labor law, because if you start saying that, then you're going to have a bigger problem, because when it's time for classified staff to get off and then they're walking out the door at exactly that time, then you're going to hear from principals saying, I had a staff member just walk out and left students, they were left out, and so we don't want to confuse people, so let's just, we'll end this conversation and then we'll talk more about it, because I don't want people misunderstanding what we're discussing.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 10.2, procurement update. This agenda item is the section where we're going to get a procurement update. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask that Mrs. Luana Robinson Lee, our Executive Director of Business Operations, to come before the board to present our procurement update. And one thing I didn't mention, Madam Chair, I do meet with the internal auditor monthly as well as with Ms. Robinson Lee for procurement on a monthly basis. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Robinson Lee.
We working? All right, we cooking with Crisco. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Moore. I come before you tonight to give you a brief overview of our procurement update. Really quickly, our thresholds are $1 to $5,000, next level is $5,000 to $15,000, and anything that's above $15,000 is handled with our team. Our P-card trans, single transaction limit is $5,000, which coincides with our small purchasing threshold. So our most common purchasing methods are quotes, we do formal quotes, state, district, and cooperative contracts, we do exemptions and competitive seal solicitations. Last year, we did 54 competitive seal solicitations, those include our RFPs, request for proposal, invitation for bid, best value bids, and requests for quotes. We also did 54 sole sources and two emergencies, and the top categories that we procure competitively include technology, facilities and maintenance, and educational services. Our activity summary for our P-cards, last year we have 201 P-cards, we did roughly 24,000 P-card transactions and that spend was 8.7 million. Purchase orders that were issued, we did a little over 7,600, and that total of purchase orders issued was 229,381. We do compliance and risk management and procurement, so all of our competitive procurements and purchase orders were handled in accordance to our district's procurement code, regulations, and procedures. We do risk monitoring on a monthly basis with our bookkeepers, I affectionately call that post checks, we check their posts, make sure they trending okay, we're not, you know, they're not getting information overload. We do annual training with our bookkeepers and principals, and we do additional trainings as required or as needed, so on an as-needed basis would be our new bookkeepers or our principals, and on as required would be anybody that's done some naughty things like unauthorized purchasing. So we conducted 14 of those trainings last year. Some notable contracts that we issued and awarded, co-teaching and inclusionary practice services, we did Genitor AI platform, we also did our auditing services, electronic family medical leave management system, we did some serving lines, water treatment services, and networking switches for our E-rate. Upcoming procurements, we have our ERP system, data warehouse, we're going to do some architect and engineering services, construction manager at risk, and facility studies. For our supplier engagement, so last year, we, our certified MBE participation was 2.8% of the controllable dollars, our total MBE participation was 9.2% of the controllable dollars. We also sponsored our third, our second annual reverse trade show, that was on March 18th, we had roughly 800 registered participants for that event. Our team also does additional networking events outside of the district, so we register for the SCAP, that's the South Carolina Association of Governmental Purchasing Officials Reverse Trade Show, they hold two, they host two reverse trade shows a year in Columbia and Charleston, and we also attended the Richland County Sixth Annual Engage Richland. That was quick, I know y'all know, I don't talk fast. Any questions?
Ms. Robinson Lee, so board members, as I stated, Ms. Robinson Lee and I do meet monthly, she brings a file box with her, we go through the procurement processes and we review the transactions to include all ratifications. And when she talked about for those people on the naughty list, she talks me off the ledge of pulling people's cards for not doing what they need to do. She has a modified timeline, if they do not comply or they do not adhere to the policy and we continue to have a problem, I will repossess that card for a year, and I have done that, so we'll open it up at this point for questions.
Board members?
Madam Chair?
Oh, Mr. Dennis.
So you was talking about the post checks, when you're doing the post checks, anything that you find that's wrong, do y'all try to correct that on the spot or do you keep a running tally of those and then go back?
So our post checks are typically, this is a quick, it's not a mandatory meeting that we have with our bookkeepers, this is a quick, if there's any process or procedure changes that we've had in the previous month or something that's forthcoming, we kind of give information in that meeting. So it's not a meeting where we, you know, try to, I won't say hem them up in something, but if they have any questions, I always like to tell them hypothetically, so if there's something going on at your location and you don't, you know, you don't want to blow the whistle, you say, Luana, hypothetically, if we did X, Y, and Z, is that okay? So those are the kind of meetings that we have with the post checks.
Copy, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Trapp, I haven't asked you, Mr. Trapp, do you have any questions?
Well, you know what, I do have one question here on the last page, on the, under the certified MBEs, now I would just, we're talking, those figures, those percentages, is that the percentage of the money, of the budget money that is, that is spent on the suppliers, is that what that number, the 2.8 and the 9.2?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, so we really only have 2.8% of certified businesses that we spend money on?
That was the calculation from last fiscal year, so out of our controllable dollars, yes, sir, it was 2.8%.
Okay, 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 that's all I was going to, I want to make sure I understood that. Thanks.
I do have a question. I'm sorry.
No, not a question, I just want to say thank you for this, you were precise and to the point, so I do appreciate that, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you so much again for your presentation, again, thank you for getting to the point and presenting the information, but now that Mr. Trapp, I mean, yes, Mr. Trapp asked a question about the 2.8% for certified minority businesses, what are ways that the office will try to increase that?
So in our minority business plan that you all disapproved, thank you very much, because I have to get that in, to make my external auditors happy and to meet our procurement code regulations, we said that we are going to have a gentle push when we are sourcing goods and services that are going to be between $5,000 and $15,000, so we can request, now we're going to request that our schools, locations, departments, et cetera, at least attempt to get one quote from a certified minority business when they're sourcing for their good or service. We're also going to do a how-to-do-business-with-the-district event, I'm thinking that we're going to probably do that at the beginning of our reverse trade show that we're going to do in March, have a brief how-to-do-business guide meet with the vendors prior to the reverse trade show. We're also going to update our website to include some live things that we're sourcing at the moment. We do, on our website, we do have our Open Gov system and that's how we source, we use Open Gov when we are sourcing anything that's competitively sealed, so that is on there, but we're going to just be a little bit more forward-facing with our social media platforms as well.
Thank you so much, I just, I read it, but I wanted the public to kind of hear it because it was in our docs, but thank you so much for the brief overview.
You did cook today. So the question I had was also about the MBEs, mainly just because I do want the public to understand like the difference between certified and non-certified, that what we get credit for is the certified, correct?
That is correct, so we have to, we have, our credit goes to our certified minority businesses and they have to be certified by the South Carolina Smaller Minority Certification, Business Certification and Contracting, that's part on the state level. So there are certifications that are offered all over the United States, but for our dollars, it has, they have to be certified by SMBCC, South Carolina Minority Business Contracting and Certification.
Thank you, okay, is there any other questions that we missed, anybody? Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, before Ms. Robinson Lee leaves the podium, a point of order?
Yes.
Today is her birthday, and we just wanted to wish her a happy birthday. This morning, when I went by her office to wish her a happy birthday, I told her, there could be no better place for her to be on her birthday than at a board meeting presenting, so happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yes, happy birthday, if you told us, we would have wore hats. Next time, next time, thank y'all. All right, so our next item is going to be item 10.3, Student Discipline Report, the agenda item in this section is a student discipline report, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Mr. Matt Sherman, our Executive Director of Student Services, to come to present to the board, and I guess he will be accompanied by his awesome director.
The dream team.
The dream team of Ms. Kimberly Hutcherson.
AM is Donna Taylor, Family Intervention Services. So friends, first thanks for having us this evening and being able to present, I know we just came together recently at your work session and that was a little bit deeper dive overall, but we want to focus tonight on some trends specifically from fourth quarter that we'll share with you, and also sharing our core values, we definitely want to focus on two tonight, continuous improvement and definitely joy. So yes, we can talk about discipline and still find the joy in it, so that's what we're sharing with you tonight. First off, looking at the trends, we've always want to give you four years to look at the fourth quarter, looking at last year specifically, we started pretty strong overall with incidents, as you can see there in the green, that first two quarters we were doing well, but clearly we spiked in the second half of the year. Specifically, I want to share with you, when you look at level one, level two, and level three, level one incidents are those behavioral misconducts, and specifically, that's when little Matt makes a poor choice and that poor choice impacts me, I'm tardy to class, I cut class, I don't pay attention, that's on me. Now, level two is disruptive conduct, though when little Matt makes a poor choice, now I'm impacting others, and that's where it ratchets up to more significant consequences. And then finally, level three, when Matt makes a poor choice, that's criminal, that's unsafe for myself and others, so just a little bit better understand what those different levels mean. Looking at last year, you can see from the quarters, level one being the blue, and that's where the high incidents take place, that kind of red in the middle are the level twos and the level threes, which we're glad to see are much lower, but again, those are significant behaviors and intentions. Definitely a clear spike when we get the year started, kind of levels off, but from this, what I want to show in the level ones, what we take piece in knowing that some of this is within our control. Clearly, a lot of the priorities from academics, when we talk about the coaching conversations that are happening at schools, we talk about creating PLCs to find those expertise in knowing the building, but the district and what's working in those classes and amplify it throughout the district, we have a clear opportunity to have the most impact on these level one incidents that are hitting all of our schools. The top are the tardy, cutting class, disruptive behavior, and refuse to obey, and we really want to show that continued level ones can definitely elevate to level two. And that's where we're going from a loss of privileges or detention or those restorative ideas more to now in-school, out-of-school suspension.
All right, good evening, Board Chair, members of the board, Dr. Moore. It is a pleasure to talk about the next bits of information and also what our department is doing in an effort to make sure that we are reducing expulsions as well as looking at our suspensions and providing the necessary support that our schools need to function. This data kind of shows just a little in terms of trends, and if you notice, it's kind of like, it all kind of starts steady and then it moves in an upward trend, and then it moves downward, kind of like a roller coaster, and then it phases out. And as Mr. Sherman alluded to, we know that there are so many things that can contribute to spikes, and so our department is studying data to look at those trends and correlating whether it's related to classroom management, teacher fatigue, absences in school buildings, so there's so many different things that could contribute. And so our plan of action is to make sure that we're doing routine walkthroughs and also providing that necessary support as needed based on what the data outlines. So when we focus on identified areas of improvement from our discipline data, we have confrontation and altercation, failure to comply. Now, those two, if you notice, can be student-driven but also teacher-correlated. And so for one of those reasons, we want to make sure that we're focusing on professional development, on how to engage in conversations with students, especially when you notice that they're struggling with self-regulation. Fighting and hit, kick, and push, what we've noticed when we've reviewed some referrals historically is sometimes behaviors are being coded, but it may not be associated by definition. So we also are making sure that we're providing professional development to administrators on codes, behaviors, and state and federal definitions. Drug and tobacco-related offenses, we are looking closely on what we can do to make sure that we're providing education to our schools, our families, pulling in community-based partnerships, but also trying to create an intervention-based approach to talk about what we can do specifically to vaping. And I know when we met at the retreat, we also talked about the concerns of how access is for students in our communities, and we want to make sure that we pull the community in to engage in further conversations. When you look at this chart, this is considered the ABC model, and this is the education that's being provided when you talk about adult and student behavior and how they interact and how one can impact the other in terms of self-regulation, but also understanding behavior. So with the ABC model, in order to truly understand the behavior, you must focus on the antecedent. The antecedent is what triggered that student's behavior and understanding that before you associate the consequence. I asked a question at the administrators' training and I said, I wonder what would happen if teachers were required to write the antecedent prior to submitting the discipline referral? And overwhelmingly, the administrator said referrals would decrease, so I ended that discussion by saying hint, hint. If you look at the next slide, it outlines best practices. Years ago, we brought best to the district, it was a model that was implemented that was approved by the American Institute of Free Search. So we're looking at how we can support schools, understanding that MTSS has to work alongside our department in order to decrease levels of suspensions, but also to make sure that we have improved behavior. And so when we talk about education, it's not just students, but it's also parents and staff. So these are just some examples of things that our department is looking to do to bring some supports based on the needs. All schools are different and there may be certain things that one school needs that another does not, but this just kind of gives you an idea of helping a school to scale down what is needed in order to have a true MTSS model. And I'll now turn it over to one of my favorite... And I'll now turn it over to one of my favorite intervention services, and that's Family Intervention Services.
Good evening. Again, my name is Dinah Taylor. I'm the coordinator for Family Intervention Services, and thank you so much for asking me to come and talk about Family Intervention Services. As you see in this picture, we just welcomed 14 graduate counseling interns. They are from various colleges and universities in our area. We have a partnership with USC and CIU. And so last year, we had over 1,200 referrals. 60% of those referrals were actually from our hearing officer, and another 40% of those referrals were voluntary referrals. What that means is there's a staff of six of us, and we cannot do that alone. And so our 14 interns help us to provide free counseling in our district to Richland two families, and our program actually stands out from other programs in the area. We do not pathologize. What that means is we do not diagnose, and our families actually appreciate that. Another is we do not bill, and so we get an opportunity to see families, we get an opportunity to create generational change in our district, and it is a blessing, and I'm so excited that our district believes in this program, believes in the work. So thank you so much for allowing me to talk about FIS.
We want to share that joy and definitely point out that from eight in the morning till 8:00 PM at Pinnacle Point, we're receiving families. So we're meeting them before work, after work, and really trying to change and rebuild families. So I just wanted y'all to see, a lot of tough numbers we share with you, a lot of continuous improvement and opportunities to grow, but we couldn't end on that. I wanted you to see, we took those interns in, they'll be with us throughout the year, so a lot of great things are happening in Student Services.
All right, board members? Thank y'all.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Elkin Scott.
I just want to say you guys are truly the dream team, and the dream team I've been waiting and wanting and dreaming about. Your expertise coming from the school level, and just with the best program that you guys have worked with, this is what we need. And already, I am so excited about what's going to take place, especially without students. I always tell people, and even when I go and do my school visits, I say to them, don't look at students for who they are, look at students for who they can become. So when you're speaking with them, and when you're doing things with them, see the doctor in them, see the entrepreneur in them, see the pastor in them, whatever, but don't look at the behavior. Remove that behavior from the child, and look at the child, and treat them as a person who's a human, someone that you want to care about. So I'm so excited about what you guys are going to see, um, do, because I've seen you in action in your principalship. I've had the opportunity to go over to the Family Intervention Center, and I've had the opportunity to be a part of the program training that they actually did with us, which I would love for you guys to take that out into the community, or have something here at R2I2, where you invite families to come in, just so they all know what you do. So I'm just very excited, and I think just having the dream team here, because that's exactly what you guys are, we are going to save students. And not only are we going to save students, we're going to really be a good resource for teachers and for principals, because they are so embedded in all the things they have to do, the requirements from the state, or principals telling them to do, but they still need to be trained and tied on what's going on. So I'm so excited to see what you guys are going to do, and that's just my passion, my heart for saving students. So if there's anything that we can do on the board, please feel free to reach out. And then not only reach out, train us too, because we can also use that training, especially when we're making decisions, when it's about student outcomes with student discipline and expulsion. So thank you so much for what you do and what you're going to do. I'm so excited.
Ms. Porter?
Yes, I just wanted to share the suggestion, maybe, and that is to create something to give to our families in the book bags at back-to-school night. I don't know if that's something that's already done, because it's often, I'm often asked, what do we provide, or I hear about a situation where I know that Family Intervention Services would be the right answer. So maybe that being something that we include to, since so many students come out at back-to-school for the book bags.
Keep it short. I just want to say thank you for your sacrifice for ensuring family, students, and staff have joy. It's been a pleasure to see all of you all in your different capacities and now here. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Trapp?
Thank you.
Mr. Trapp, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, ma'am, I don't.
Okay. He's a man of few words. He's sick today. So I just want to say, yeah, I, great presentations, you guys, and I liked what Dr. Elkin Scott said about like an event where the community events, they seem to do really well, and I think parents like that, and it gives them an opportunity to find out what we offer, and then, you know, adding along with that, making sure there's something always readily available that we could hand out. You could give it to us, we'll hand it out, do it too, and, you know, at all the events that we're at as well. So, but thank you for the presentation, and we look forward to seeing these numbers go woo. Thank y'all.
There's a lot of work to do, so let's pace ourselves.
We're going to pace ourselves. Did you sense my sense of urgency? Oh, because you were in the meeting. Did you hear I was a north, which means I'm full speed ahead? Thank y'all, we appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
You're so quiet over there.
I know. Thank you for everything, but I just wanted to make sure I wrote this down right. You had over 1,200 referrals with a staff of six, correct? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank y'all. Yes, we are on now to item, oh, 11.0, agenda items for the next meeting. Let's take a look at the draft agenda for September 9th. Oh, so we're already here, September 9th, 2025, regular board meeting. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and yes, August is gone, and we are in the month of September, but it is not fall yet. So our next regularly scheduled board meeting is September 9th, 2025. We will have our call to order at 5:30 PM, followed by welcome and pledge of allegiance. Move then to the approval of the agenda. We will release to executive session, and in executive session, we will discuss student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations, and certified releases, receipt of legal advice for the superintendent's evaluation, and resume public session at 6:30 PM. We will then move to our inspirational moment, followed by the consent agenda, which will include approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from previous meeting, and classified employment releases and in-district transfers. Next, we will have our public participation, followed by voting on the executive session items, which will include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and as needed for items discussed in executive session. Next, we will have our new business action requested. The board will discuss a change of time for the September 23rd, 2025 regularly scheduled board meeting from 5:30 PM to 4:30 PM, followed by board reports, which will include updates. Then we'll have the superintendent's report, followed by agenda items for the next meeting, which we will review draft agenda for the September 23rd, 2025 board meeting, and our if needed items of public participation, executive session, voting on executive session items, conclude with board and superintendent highlights and adjourn.
All right, board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next agenda or a future agenda meeting? Okay? No one? Anyone? If so, you can send us an email. All right, we will make sure we get it on there. All right, so because we have changed our format a little, and this meeting is the heavier meeting, we are now going to ask for adjournment.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to adjourn the August 26th, 2025 regular board meeting.
All right, do I have a second? Second. The motion's been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion?
No.
All right, is the motion correct on the screen? If it is, everybody raise your right hand. Raise your right hand.
I am raising my right hand.
All right, all right. The, that's seven, the motion is seven yes, zero no. The meeting is adjourned.